You ready?
Yeah, I think you're good to go.
All right, we'll call this work session to order. And Dana, you want to read the mission, vision and value statement?
All right, my pleasure. Mission statement, educating each student to be the highest standards while motivating them to reach their fullest potential and graduating them to be college, career and life ready. Our vision statement, our schools are a place where children belong. Each student is known by name, strength and need and provided the education and opportunities to achieve success. Our values striving for equity, inclusion and belonging, celebrating diversity, engaging the community, supporting the whole child, promoting and achieving academic excellence.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I want to thank everyone for joining us this warm evening and I will turn it over to Dr. Bernal.
Great, thank you so much. Tonight, we're having a work session with the board of directors. We thought we would take this opportunity. We, you know, we have a lot of different buckets of work happening across our district. Some of this work overlaps depending on the work, but there is a lot of really good work happening. And so we thought it would be a good use of our time just to use, update the board on all the different work that we are doing and where we're at with it and where we're going. And this is meant to be interactive. So if you have questions along the way, we have it kind of divvied up into sections. And so we can stop after each section. And if you have questions, please feel free to ask and we will try to answer all of them as best as we can. And Robin, are you able to pull up the presentation?
Yes, I'm trying now.
Oh.
Yeah.
Busy desktop.
Something in a mess. Let me try that one more. This one?
Yes, except we can't see it.
My internet's going a little slow, so if it's too glitchy, then we'll switch over to one of you guys. If that's okay.
Yeah.
Would you like me to share it instead?
Sorry, I didn't realize it was only showing the little bar. Yeah, maybe we'll try and then maybe. Yeah, could someone else share for a moment and then let me take over and then I'm happy to.
You want to share it, Amy? There we go. All right. Okay, so if you want to hit the next slide, Amy. And I will turn the time over to Director Brennan. She's going to talk a little bit about just integrated guidance. We updated you a little bit about integrated guidance at our last work session, but we'll just remind you again of kind of where we are in the process and what's coming with integrated guidance. And then she's also going to talk about some program monitoring that we have happening. All right, Director Brennan, it's all you.
Yeah, hi, everyone. So I just want to, I just wanted to remind you of the integrated guidance framework. Integrated guidance is we're on the, the two-year biennium where we have to submit an application to ODE. And previously, we had all of these different programs and funding sources that were their own entity. And two years ago, it all came together into integrated guidance. And I think already this year, in this biennium, we have just a much better grasp of how all of these programs come together to support the goals that we're trying to achieve in North Wasco, which are outlined in our strategic plan and through the intensive program as well. So we have high school success, the student investment account, early indicator and intervention systems, early literacy success, school district grants. CTE is part of it, though we are a consortium. And then we have the federal school improvement with targeted supports. And so all of that is now one big application rather than all of these separate individual applications. I, the, go ahead, Amy, to the next slide, please. I gave you a rough outline of all the work that our integrated guidance planning team is doing each month. And, and now we're down to the final last couple of meetings. And, and that team is beginning to make recommendations to the cabinet so that we can then align and prioritize different strategies and activities. In March, like I told you previously, I'll share a draft plan of our integrated guidance application so that then you can offer any sort of feedback that you have. And even just any questions that you might have might then guide us towards some revisions that we will make by the end of April. And, and then submit it to, to ODE. I put these dates in here, February 20th, March 6th, March 12th, April 3rd and April 10th. Because those are the, the dates that the cabinet, the executive cabinet has identified as, as when we are really working on all of these, the, the writing of, of the application. That's the extent of everything for integrated guidance. Does anybody have any questions at this point?
One thing, I couldn't remember, so the plan, a lot of work's gone into it. We'll submit it here in the next couple of months. How long is that good for is my question? Is this, does this become an annual thing or once we do that as a good for the biennium? Is there a period of time that the plan is good for and that we will work towards achieving the elements within the plan?
Yep, so it's a, it's a two-year plan. So we are writing patient for the 25 to 27 plan. And then two years from now, in, you know, the 26, 27 year, I anticipate, as long as ODE doesn't make any changes to the, to that schedule, that it would be, again, we'd come back, we'd reflect on the activities, the strategies, and, and see, have they been effective in helping us to achieve what we're trying to achieve? I would like to just add a little detail because it's been really fun for me. This year especially, being able to connect a lot of different parts and different committees is not the right word, teams and, and, and work that we have, for example, constructing meaning, different curriculum leadership teams. And, and it's really great that I'm able to, like, I'm able to connect, like, why we're doing this work and how this other team is supporting this work, et cetera, et cetera. And to the point that I think a lot of these, the people that, that are part of that work, the teachers that are part of that work, are really seeing the connections to all of it and seeing that, oh yeah, it's not just this separate initiative of constructing meaning. Or it's not just this curriculum leadership team that is trying to align things across the district, but really seeing how all of those different parts of our work are coming together. And, and I was with constructing meaning facilitators today for the ELLA chief symposia. And, and it was just really great, like, how, what they are wanting to do in terms of moving that work forward to ensure that we are providing students with opportunities for structured student talk, that, that we are providing scaffolds so that kids can achieve grade level expectations. Like what they are asking for, for constructing meaning, we are also doing already with administrators. So we're now just like, we're, we're expanding a lot of the work and then also connecting the work for those people. So it's, it's been really fun for me to, to kind of pull it together a little bit more and not just have like these isolated and siloed pockets of work. Okay. The other thing that I am going to share with you is about the, the federal programs monitoring that we have. I don't remember, I don't, last year we had Title III desk monitoring. It was the, the, the purpose from ODE is to ensure that yes, we are complying with federal programs. But if there are areas in which we don't have systems in place already, ODE is, is very collaborative in helping us to, to, to build, determine and then build whatever systems that that might be. There were a couple of areas last year with Title III that we had to, that we, that we had some, some, some things that we had corrective action on. I suspect that will be the case again this year with the, the monitoring that we have. But the, I'll just read this to you. Oh, go back, please. The monitoring state and federal programs helps ensure that all children have a fair, equal and significant opportunity to obtain a high quality education and that funding is used in a manner that addresses the intended purpose of the title program. Monitoring also informs the technical assistance activities and resources ODE will develop. So go ahead to the next slide. We are having these programs monitored. And so it, it is a lot. We're expecting a very collaborative process with, with ODE. They will have a visit out to North Wasco. We've already had our initial meeting with them. And that also included a self-assessment where we took a look at all of these different programs and said, this is how we think we're doing in them. And this is where we know we, these are areas where we know we could improve. Go ahead. So here's the timeline. We, like I said, that, that self-assessment, we completed in December. We met with ODE staff in January, just to kind of go over like, here's an overview, this is what we can all expect. We submitted materials last week and we'll have a follow-up meeting with them in March and they'll come out and visit us in April or May. Those dates aren't yet determined.
Sure.
Yeah.
The programs monitored in North Wasco, that's ODE is monitoring those?
Yes.
And how have they identified that those need to be monitored in our district?
Um, so, so desk monitoring is a very regular occurrence. Every three years, from what I've been told, they do program monitoring. And, and so we, that was just the cycle that we were on last year for Title III. And I suspect it's just the cycle that we are on this year for all these other programs.
Okay. And then like what frequency of monitoring look like? Sorry, go ahead, Carolyn.
Oh, no, I just was going to say that there's a lot of districts across Oregon that are in what they call desk monitoring. So it just depends like what cycle you're in. Our district happened to get picked. They say it's a random selection. I don't know if it is or not, but our district happened to get picked for the more like in-depth cycle monitoring this year, where they're looking at all these various programs. And then also we got selected for the onsite visit. So. It is happening across Oregon, like we're not the only ones in desk monitoring. It's, it's pretty a regular thing that they do.
All right, more like an IRS audit, not necessarily indicative of past performance necessarily?
I mean, no, not necessarily. Yeah.
But I do think.
It is truly a, it is meant to be collaborative and it is meant to assist us. Like if there's, like, perhaps a reporting piece that we missed or that we didn't complete correctly or not what they, how they want to see it in their system on their side of things. It's meant to help us with understanding that and correcting it moving forward. So then it's all corrected moving forward. Sorry, Shannon, go ahead.
Um, do you want an example of some, like, some things that we're already changing?
Sure.
So when we first got this, the notification and I was going through the things that we needed to submit to ODE, one of them, one of the items on the list was the, the Title I school-wide plan. So all three of our elementary schools receive Title I, well, the whole, the district receives Title I funding and all of our schools are, are Title I schools. And so all students are eligible for those services. And, and what I, I quickly realized, like, we didn't actually, our schools didn't actually have school-wide Title I plans. And so already, like, you know, I, I told ODE this, I've been working, even though our, our monitoring is not complete, I've been meeting with ODE to say, okay, what is it that we need to do to get these going? And they're, they said, you know, we don't want to know what you didn't do in the past. We just want to know how we can help you to ensure that you do have these Title I school-wide plans so that it's in place. And then moving forward, it's just an updating them. So we, we can openly say that we know that our schools didn't have school-wide Title I plans, or at least there is not a record of it. And so just, just this week, actually, I was with all building, elementary building principals. They brought teams of their Title I teachers and gen ed classroom teachers to work to start to, to identify, you know, what does our data say? What are, what's the needs assessment that we have? And then what activities are we going to say that we're going to do so that we are improving reading achievement for our students? So, so that's one way, like, yeah, it, it, I, I was very open with our, the education specialist that, that I work pretty regularly with. And I said, yeah, we don't have this. And she said, well, we're not looking at punitive action. We just want to help you move forward so that, yes, you are in compliance and two, you're doing, you have very informed decisions.
So I'll just share, so if you historically, prior to, to me coming into the district and even the first year that I was here, North Wasco received their teaching and learning support through contracted services through the education service district. So that was not an in-house position. And then my first year here, we, we had a person through the ESD. And then when that person departed, I took the opportunity to bring that position in-house because I wanted to have much more control in-house in our reporting, cleaning up things on the inside that I knew weren't happening consistently prior to that. And then my second year here, we had a person in, in-house in the position and then they departed and now we've, Shannon's in the position. But it's why it's super important to have a consistent person in the position for several here so that you can get all of this, these things aligned and cleaned up. So that moving forward, you know, we are reporting consistently and we have our things in place that we're required to have. Yeah.
I've been through a number of these. And, and the attitude has changed. They used to, there was variation before, but it was all about who was the reviewer. And some of them, like, they beat you to death because you couldn't produce an agenda for one of the parent involvement meetings that happened in the fall. And you thought the world was going to end, but this is a different attitude. And frankly, it's a welcome, a different attitude. Because the other ones, we, I mean, we documented, we sent them literally three-ring binders full of stuff and they came out to tell you everything you did wrong. And there was never a financial penalty, but there's always this sort of a threat of financial penalty. So I, I, I think their attitude reflect, they get audited by the feds. And it's to the extent that they don't get findings, then they can, that's their goal, is the state doesn't get any findings. And so they're helping us not get any findings either. So.
Nice. Along those lines, like if, if there are things that they identify that we're going to be out of compliance in as they're doing this desk monitoring that are going to come in an increase, like fiscal cost to the district since it's a much more, is this no, no fiscal responsibility?
I think the potential's there, but it's very unlikely, very unlikely. The, the, again, they're, they're more interested in getting us in full compliance than penalizing you for being out of compliance.
Well, that's encouraging.
Is that accurate, Shannon?
Yeah, I, I really think so. And you know, it, the, that's the, the energy and the mentality of the intensive program. They, they are, are working alongside of us to help us build systems and structures that are sustainable across the district. And, and if we, we have all of this additional support because of the intensive program, and it's an opportunity to really help us get our feet on the ground. And I think right now, like, I, I don't know that we, that there, there will be some findings, some corrective actions. And we have some additional supports from ODE that's not, that's beyond just the educational specialist for Title I. I mean, we have our stewards and they have been nothing but supportive and, and helpful and kind. And that personally, I think the whole thing has been an incredible learning experience to, to work with them. And that's my experience with the education specialists at ODE as well.
Any other questions related to program monitoring?
The question I had was, I guess, maybe it's more curiosity, but so under the programs monitor, there's the one bullet point that's reads equitable services to private schools. So what all is encompassing that? You know, I, I know we do some support for St. Mary's, but is there more beyond that? Or it's what's captured within that, that we do?
It's all captured within that. At least once a year. In fact, this year, I think it's already been like two or three times. I meet with, with St. Mary's and we go through the different programs that we have and, and see what, if any, they want to participate in. And then a percentage of, Randy can tell you the exact percentage. I don't know off the top of my head, but, or it's, it's based on enrollment, actually. That amount of money is allocated to programs at the private school.
And so that would be things I'm assuming like special ed and other supports that students at St. Mary's would need that they don't have in-house essentially?
Special ed is a, is a very different.
And title, okay.
But these, these title programs, specifically like Title I and, and III, which isn't on here. But then also Title II and really all of these programs.
Well, and, and we're, Shannon's saying exactly right. We offer services to private schools. We had, they set it aside from the grant. So they, they say, okay, you allocate this many dollars to the private schools. But that's really not the end of the story. We're still responsible for how the private schools spend the money. So the, the, the obligation doesn't end by giving it to St. Mary's. But that's the underlying thing in the federal grants is that it's for all students, not just public school students.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions before we move to? Okay, I'm going to talk a little bit about our youth wellness community collaborative. As you already know, we, we've partnered with Joe Leckham, a mental health consultant here in the state of Oregon, who's come alongside us this year to assist us with building some stronger networking and partnerships with our community partners in supporting youth wellness and their mental health. As you know, over a year ago, we had a student die by suicide, which really triggered for me, both personally and professionally, you know, really a need to focus in on the mental health of our youth. And in our community, we have a lot of community partners who are doing great work on behalf of the youth in our community and, and focused on mental health as well as we are, but we're like not all doing it together or it's like happening in silos. And so really the goal of this work is to pull in our community partners and bring them alongside us to understand some of the challenges that we're experiencing with our youth and trying to build stronger partnerships with all of them to see how we can build a stronger network overall that supports the wellbeing of our students. So we had our very first youth wellness collaboration last fall. It was in October. We had over 25 community partners come alongside us and alongside us and district staff. And Director Wen Elidge was there, is, is one of our board members and participated. And our goal really is we're trying to address significant challenges in our kids' mental and emotional wellbeing. We want to try to have our community recognize that our schools are, are the heart of the community and that together we want to nurture both their, not only their academics, but their emotional and social growth. And we've made a commitment to really breaking barriers and having open conversations with our community partners in trying to build this network of support for our students. So we, we identified, the district team that's been working with Joe identified five kind of specific areas that we really wanted to focus on with our community partners. And one is school attendance and engagement of our kids. Another area is substance abuse prevention. Another area is direct mental health services. Another area is services for our LGBTQ plus community. That's one of our most vulnerable student populations that we serve. And then transportation and community access for our youth. And by transportation, community access, not just like to and from school, but within our community and outside our community. So those are the five areas that we are, are honing in on in working with our community partners through this collaborative. Excellent. So we actually have our next, our second community collaborative coming up actually next week. We're scheduled to meet all together on Wednesday in the morning. And we are going to do a deep dive into one of our focus areas. So this time around, we're going to be focused in on our regular attender data. And we're actually going to work closely with our community partners. And we're going to share the data that we have on our kids and regular attender data. And we're going to use the Atlas protocol, which many of you are familiar with, and work with them in small groups. And we're asking them to engage with us in this data. And really what we're hoping to achieve is to seek community-wide solutions to supporting our kids in coming to school on a regular basis. Because we believe that, you know, kids coming to school every day and regularly is not just a school district problem. It's, it's a community problem, like we all need to work on this together. And so seeking widespread solutions with our community partners and engaging them to understand and know like, what, what things could you do to help us help get our kids to school on a regular basis? So that's the work that we're doing and we're going to continue that work moving forward and also into next year because this is only the second of our meetings that we're having. And we have a lot of topics we want to cover with them. Any questions about the youth wellness community collaborative work we're doing? Okay. Youth outreach workers. Can you go the next slide, Amy? So we're really excited this year. So our school district, our, five of our six schools were identified for federally for targeted school improvement. Five of our six schools, um, were identified for, uh, federally for targeted school improvement. Um, and so that meant that each school was allocated some dollars for targeted school improvement. And, um, schools could have each written like an individual plan of like, this is how we want to spend our money, or this is what we want to do with the money. Um, last year, Shannon and the cabinet team and I worked with our school, um, principals. To go through a process to determine if schools wanted to. Use that money individually and just do their own school plan, or did we, because another option you can do is you can pool all the money together. And do something district-wide where all, everyone benefits from the money. And so we went through an activity and a process with them. And, um, came to the conclusion that everyone wanted to, um, pool the money. So that we could do something that would be to the benefit of all schools and all students and families. So, um, we ended up pulling that money and we had enough money to hire, uh, three youth outreach workers. Um, we've partnered with the Next Door, so that's a contract service. And so, um, that money actually goes through a contract to the Next Door and they've hired. The three youth outreach workers that are working in our school and that's a picture of them down there, um, to the right. Um. And, um. The, the YOWs are focusing, we call them YOWs, youth outreach workers. Um, they're focusing in on student mental health and chronic absenteeism. Um, they're providing in-school mentoring and connecting students and families to vital resources. Um, they're focusing on academic growth and then alongside with the mental, social and emotional wellbeing of our kids. Our YOWs bring to our schools student-centered support, targeted monitoring, collaboration with attendance teams and, um. Resource access and career support. So the way it works is, um, each YOW is assigned to two schools. And, um, each school has worked out between the two schools, they work out. Um, the schedule of when the YOWs are at each of their schools and how they service their schools. Um, Director Tool and I had the opportunity to meet with the Next Door last week, um, because since getting our YOWs up and going this year. We hadn't really had an opportunity to sit down with the Next Door to do a check-in. Um, and, uh, one thing we realized that would be important is that moving forward. Um, it would be great to have a once, like a once a month check-in with them, but also with our principals to understand like. What does this work look like in the schools and? What's going well with our youth outreach workers and also what are the areas that we need to grow in or what could we be doing better? To service our students and families. So, um, now they are on our monthly or weekly principals meeting once a month. Um, where I have all the principals together and we'll spend about thirty minutes once a month just coming together and talking about that. Because our goal is we want to make this as best as we can. Um, Hood River School District already has youth outreach workers and has had them for several years through the Next Door out there. Um. And so we're also trying to learn from them about things that they are doing, um, that are benefiting students and families. You go to the next slide, Amy. Um, and as you know, regular attenders data is one of our L P G T targets that we are measured by. Um, and you, you all have seen a lot of these demographics already. Um, this year, uh, we hit our target and, um. You know, our, we're, our attendance is approved, improving and we do anticipate that we'll hit next year's target as well because. It looks like just based on the data that we're seeing, we've even surpassed next year's target. Um. Any questions about our youth outreach workers and the work that they're doing in our school and kind of how that came to be?
I guess my mind immediately goes to dollars, unfortunately, just given the legislative session that we're in, right? Um, and I think this is a great. You know, um. Extension of what we provide and a benefit to not only kids, but families overall. So, you know, with that partnership of the Next Door, I mean, who, I guess, who owns a bigger? Pie when it comes to. You know, um. The funding of these positions and, you know, are we going to be able to kind of? In this next biennium, you know, I know that the dust still hasn't settled, right? It's probably. Long a few months from that, but, um, you know, is that something that we feel like can be retained or are we going to be challenged? To maintain this just via budgetary constraints that we'll likely be facing?
Yeah, it's a great question. And as I stated, um, so they are funded through what's targeted, it's called targeted school improvement dollars, which are federal dollars. And, um, we can say the same thing for all of our title dollars right now. Any of their federal dollars are a big question mark right now. Um, and so we're all kind of like. In the, um, limbo phase, we're, you know, I know both Randy and I. Um, and some members of our cabinet team are. Pretty, uh, engaged with COSA and OSBA A S A about like, what are the changes happening with title dollars? And any federal dollars, um, we don't have clarity yet. Um, what I can tell you is, um, for twenty-five, twenty-six, we've already been told that. We're going to get those federal dollars again. Um, but that doesn't mean we will get them because it, the. Because they're federal dollars and we don't know what's going on with federal funding yet. We don't have that clarity. It's hard to say. Um, and part of the, um, the work over the next few months in terms of. Having the time on principal meeting. Once a month to talk about our youth outreach workers and the work they are doing and is it benefiting our kids? Are we seeing a benefit from it? Is it a practice and thing we want to continue into the future? Um, if the federal dollars were to go away, we could have that conversation about, okay, what other sustainable funding, some funding source do we have to? To keep that going.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's federal dollars are a big question mark right now.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, CJ, do you want to talk about the first couple of parts of intensive program?
Sure.
Okay.
You can go ahead and go to that first slide. So this is just, uh, I know we've been over this a couple of times, but just a quick. Sort of overview of the intensive program as a reminder here. So, uh, that was launched in the fall of two thousand twenty-three under the Student Success Act. Uh, it's an invitation-only program based on student outcome and demographic data. So. Um, you get identified through various data points to be invited. Um, four-year minimum commitment to equity, community engagement and system improvement. And with the ultimate goals of, you know, creating that long-term, um, sustainable systemic change to, to meet these goals of improving attendance. Uh, improving third grade reading levels, ninth grade on-track rates and graduation rates specifically. Um, it's a, I, it's a fairly large body. I like to call it a very deliberative. Is the best adjective I have. Um, it's made up, uh, so. Through the intensive program, what we did last year is we formed the student success team. Which is comprised of two different bodies. There's the advisory body, which guides and, uh, explores improvement areas. And that is made up largely of community partners. Um, parents, student groups, and we do have some, um, representation from the schools, uh. Alongside them, but it's mostly a community, uh, driven, community-based sort of advisory body. And then we have the stewarding body, which is the seven-member team, um, which includes, you know, the, the district and. Oh, actually, that, what we have on that is we had Dr. Richardson, um, and, but I think today was. Dana's first day or was that the first meeting she's been involved with the intensive program, stewarding body meeting?
Yeah, so we've, we've switched, um, switched seats, uh. With Dr. Richards, she has a lot on her plate, so, um, we asked Dana if she wanted to, to take over and today was her first meeting.
Yeah.
She had the crash course today.
And of course, the superintendent, uh, Bernal, and then we have Val Rector, who's like, um, representing, uh, our teacher leaders. Um, and then four O D E stewards, you heard Doctor, or Director, uh. Brennan, I'm so used to calling you Shannon. I wanted to go to the director things. Um, uh. I'm sorry, I lost my train of thought here. Um. Anyway, these are the recommendations. So we started last year, we got the student success team built. Um, and then we got seven recommendations up and going. So this, this process is, like I said, deliberative. It goes from. A proposal reflection, which is sort of a, a write-up. When someone has an idea, you have to go through this write-up process of exploring like what are the impacts? How's it aligned with? Strategic, um, planning and our, and our other initiatives and things. And it'll go through an advisory body process for feedback. It'll go through a stewarding body. Process for feedback, which we call cycles of refinement until. We have a finished product and then there's a consensus meeting held. And the stewarding body can then achieve consensus and approve it. Uh, so these are the seven recommendations that went through last year. Um, so you'll see on here some, some things that I think we might talk about a little bit, uh, like the special education process review. Um, you know, that's bringing in a lot of information for us to evaluate. Community engagement assessment is something that we're. Has brought in some information for us to start working on as well. Um. And. And then this year so far, there's been two approved recommendations this year. Um. One for the youth truth partnership and one for the youth advisory council. Um, and then we have a couple of other recommendations that are basically early on in that there's proposal reflections. And there's work starting and that's, uh, one around some avid. Uh, potential avid funding and then another one around, um, some translation equipment. Um, that, um, we think could be real valuable for us to have. So, and then. With this comes. A, you know, a very active progress monitoring process. Um, so each one of these recommendations has to be progress checked and we do that also through the intensive program meetings. Um. And then they, and then we will evaluate them on a yearly basis, um, to make sure that we are doing what we set out to do. And we're in, and things are working the way we wanted them to work, uh, or reevaluate. So.
Now, for, for each recommendation, um, there's like a three-month progress. Marker, a six-month progress marker, nine-month, twelve-month. And so progress monitoring is part of that. Um. And like, so like the three-month progress marker would, we would have things listed that should have been completed within three months. Tied to that recommendation, same with the six-month marker, nine-month, twelve-month. And then we progress check together. Um. But as, as Director Tool alluded to, it's a very, um, intentional process. Um. And. We, we do a lot of deep work around the recommendations.
And it's, and it does, it comes with a grant, so it's, it had, it, it has its own funding source basically. And then the only way to tap those. Um, things is to go through this very deliberative process and get your recommendations approved. Um, and then begin your progress monitoring. And then that's when we, uh, we can access the funds and things for. What it is we've come up with. And then specific. Go ahead. Did you want to do this?
Um, I can talk about youth truth if you want.
Okay.
Um, youth truth, uh, so that is a recommendation that was approved, um, at the end of last year, but we're doing the work this year and the next two years. Um, for the remainder of the intensive program. Um. And so. Youth Truth Survey is going to survey our students in grades three through twelve. It will survey all of our families and it will survey all of our staff. Um, and. Each, each group is going to get similar questions. And so what it's going to be able to give us is a lot of comparative data. Um, we will be administering, so right now we're in the pre-survey work phase. Um, we just had our, uh. Planning meeting with our, uh, person from Youth Truth that walked us through the timeline and how it's going to work. And now we're in the pre-survey work, which, um, our principals are going to be getting an email. Uh, the first week of March, that's going to let them know, here's everything that's going to happen. This is how the survey will be administered. And then we will have a survey window, um, that will start on March thirty-first and run through April twenty-fifth. Um, and then our reports from our surveys, meaning all the data that will, that will come back should be delivered on or before. March, uh, sorry, May ninth. Um, it'll be shared out with principals, um, and, and the cabinet team. And then, um, each school site will get some time with Youth Truth, um, to go through their data. And then in June, we will have an in-person, um. A time with Youth Truth as a team, as a whole leadership team to go through our data and determine next steps. And then we will administer this survey, um, every year moving forward. Um, even beyond the intensive program, um. Every year during the same kind of timeframe. So then we will be building and having comparative data over time. Next slide, Amy. CJ, you want to talk about this one?
Sure. The Youth Advisory Council, another recommendation that surfaced during the, the final S S T or Student Success Team meeting of last year. Um, and this really came out of. Our, a real desire to get more student voice involved in a broader range of student voices. Um, and, um, the Next Door Incorporated has this, uh, Youth Advisory Council. So. Um, they have Heather Howard, who sits on our advisory body. We started having discussions about, you know, how do we maybe utilize, um. Youth groups and different, and different organizations to be able to report or provide information, insight. And give us those student and, and kid voices. Um, and so this was one that kind of came out of that one. Um, and it was part of our meeting, I think, the other day with the YOWs, because there'll be some work with the YOWs, a little crossover. Um, setting up that Youth Advisory Council and it'll, it'll also cross over into our intensive program teams. So that they can be a part of like the advisory body. As a, as another youth voice.
I'm gonna pause there and see if we have any questions about our intensive program. And any of the recommendations or work that we have happening.
Thank you, Dr. Bernal. I'll just make two comments if it's all right.
Yeah.
One is having been involved with this work, um. Those two, the Youth Advisory, um, Council and you think are just two of many projects that, um, are really impactful. And super cool that we have in our district. And I just want to shout out in prop to Dr. Bernal and to CJ for spearheading this work and. Um, without their hard work and diligence, we wouldn't have the benefit of, um, the O D E and the funding. And then also thank you to, um, I thank you to, uh, uh. Dana for stepping in. Thank you to Dana for stepping in in my seat. If there were eight days in the week, I would definitely not, uh, give up this seat because it's so, um. Impactful and, and the projects are coming from community and parents and students and teachers. And so I think it's just really great. And thank you, Dana, for serving.
I'm stepping into some big, I'm stepping into some big shoes. So, um, I hope I don't get, uh. Some type of scoring at the end. Because I don't think I'll be as good as you.
There's no report card, Dana.
Okay.
Okay, um, and then I'll have Director Tool talk a little bit about our C and C TOSA work, our Culture and Climate TOSA's, which are teachers on special assignment, which came through the intensive program as a recommendation. Um, and, and the work that they're doing in our schools.
I had one question on the youth trip before we move on to the C and C stuff. Um, how is that, I guess, administered and, and? You know, are we looking for a certain level of participation or, or surveys completed? Because. You know, most often surveys, you know, i- it's a, a range of participation and. Obviously, the more we do it, probably the more people will start kind of to complete them. But I can see probably a challenge of trying to get. Quite a bit of information out of the gate. Um, you know, I, I know some people get inundated with stuff. You know, and sometimes they start tuning it out and like the meaningful part of this is to get the, the true kind of. Information and, and feedback from the families and obviously the students as well.
Yeah. So one thing I forgot to mention, so the survey is anonymous. So, um, but it will track like demographic data. Um, and some, like, other data points that we are interested in, but it is, um, it's anonymous on purpose so that we can get, take feedback. Um, so students, um, will take it at school, right? So we'll have them as a captive audience and we will assign time for them to take it. Each principal will determine like what that's going to look like in their school and when kids are going to take it. Um, they have a whole month window to take, to do it. So, um, and the survey. Uh, should take approximately between twenty to twenty-five minutes. So like for our younger kids. uh, should take approximately between twenty to twenty-five minutes. So like for our younger kids, um, you know, it's just thinking about that endurance piece. Like especially like our third graders, but they're also preparing for the OSAS. So you know, it's all about that like time and attention and can they endure it? Um, so anyway, our, our kids and then um, we do have, uh, we have board policy and whatnot, like we will put, we'll follow our policy. We have to put, um, put out the survey for our kids. Um, five days in advance of the window opening so that if there's any parents that want to opt their kid out, they have that option. Um, the survey um, will be opt, al- also offered in um, Spanish. So like for our dual immersion kids, um, we can make sure that they can take it in Spanish and/or any of our English learner newcomers that need the survey in Spanish versus English. That's an that's an option as well. Um, our staff uh, will work with principals and they will dedicate some of their staff meeting time to allow for the survey to be taken during staff meeting time so that we can get a hundred percent participation back from our staff. And then um, our families will be the part where we're going to have to do the most uh, work to really get as much input and feedback from our families as possible. Again, the survey will be offered in um, in English and Spanish. Um, and we've talked a lot about you know, having um, the URL code where they can snap it on their phone, do it on their phone. Um, we've talked about during the month that the survey window is open, if there are any family nights, you know, having computers set up, asking parents, please can you sit down, take the survey for us? Um, a lot of Stephanie and I will work on a lot of the PR side of it. Um, and the why and why we want their input and why we want their feedback, because this is all about your, your ex, your experience, your child's experience in our schools and also your experience as a parent. Right? We, we want that information um, because we can't improve or be better if we don't have it and, and we're not hearing those voices. So um, the family piece is going to be the biggest um, hustle that we're going to have to do um, to get you know, the highest percent back.
Is that? And so largely it would live digitally then, or will there be, I guess, an opportunity for some families that may want say handwritten or, or a paper form with that?
It's a digital, it's a digital survey, because it's, yeah, yeah. Um, I mean, but we know that our families like have access because I think in our entire district, we probably only have we have a very tiny percent, but for example, don't have parent square, right? Like we, we know that all of our families are receiving messaging through parent square. They're getting the information. They're able to access it. So but we will work with our principals and just across our district to provide as many opportunities during that month to take the survey. Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Back to you, Director Tool.
So the, the CNC TOSA's or the climate and culture TOSA's, you can go to that first slide. Um, the, these were positions created through the intensive program process last year that we, we got going on, or we, we started up this year. Um, and that's their teachers on special assignments. There's currently one at each elementary. And the TOSA's, the idea behind the TOSA's is to really focus on uh, helping the principals and the teachers in the buildings create restorative and positive school environments. Um, so I always think of them as the teachers of teachers. So we wanted to go find people that were, had, they were teachers and had been successful in a lot of these things that we're talking about, bring them in and have them start working uh, more directly with, with our teachers. And then it's um, you know, it's for the final three years of the four-year intensive program grant. So we built it on a three-year timeline. Which uh, is basically um, is first year is to establish things and um, pilot project, everything in the elementaries. Um, and then year two would be to try and refine that and begin planning for secondary support and moving things to our secondary schools, middle school and the high school and innovations. Um, and then that third year refining the elementary and, and, and supporting the secondary implementation. So um, go to the next slide. What I do is I went ahead. So this, this is an example. I took this straight out of the implementation plan of what Dr. Bernal was talking about earlier, when we had the zero three months, uh, milestones, three to twelve. Um, so the, here's what we're, we've been working on, you know, as we're getting this thing up and running. Um, and so far this year, the, the TOSA's have already today would have been the day we reviewed student perception data from the elementary schools, but it was a snow day, so we had to push it to next week, but we just finished the second round of student perception data. And that's really, um, you know, the importance of that is, is getting at uh, the attendance issues and things. We're, we're looking for what are the barriers, what are the things? You know, that um, are keeping kids from going to school and we want to make sure it's of, you know, it's a welcoming place for all kids. Um, and they've uh, been included in the student experience and the teaching learning alignment group, which is going through our upbeat data. Um, and that's, that's a group that has like anybody like a coaching role coming together um, so that we can sort of align everybody's coaching practice so that we're, we have uh, consistency within the coaching that's taking place across the district. Um, and the the TOSA's are actually planning focus groups right now that would um, come from the upbeat data that they could do um, as a trio in each school. The, uh, part of what we wanted to do is is to also work together to build PD um, opportunities and, and things for the staff uh, for the continued growth and working on, on our practices. So um, and then, oh, this is going to make me sad because we had a really good collaboration, we still do, um, with Danica Jensen Weiner. Um, who's a, a restorative uh, justice specialist with ODE. Um, and we had an in-service plan for tomorrow with our principals, principals and counselors, child development specialists, behavior specialists and our TOSA's. The idea being like, kind of let's get all these key um, positions into a room together. I mean, my, in my experience, um, coming to education ten years ago. Like almost all the problems get solved as soon as you get people around a table together. You know, because there's a lot of creativity that can happen. So that was really the focus of it, uh, weather did not cooperate with us. Um, and then we're also going to be including the CNC TOSA's into the youth truth survey work. Um, just because uh, we want to make sure that all the survey things are sort of routed through the similar um, processes and we'll be able to look at data from multiple tools. So we'll have our own student perception data. We could look at it, see how it compares to the data from the youth truth survey work. And of course, the youth through survey work will, has the added benefit of the staff and the parental data as well. So. Any questions on that?
Doctor Hampton, you're on.
My turn. So um, one of the thing, that one of the recommendations that was approved by the intensive program last year was an audit of the special education department. And the reason that we wanted to do this is we wanted to look at um, our instruction and our interventions, make sure that we're being as effective as we possibly can. Um, also, I know that my staff needs training and trying to figure out exactly how to target that training was something that I wanted an outside lens to ensure that I was hitting all of the right areas. Our, the preschool programs that feed up to us have really moved to an inclusion model, which is not something that our district has to the extent that those ones have. So I wanted to find out if there's other ways that we could be including our students in our classrooms to be more equitable. And also as we have been studying all of the different data through the intensive program and through integrated guidance, we know that there is still quite a gap between the achievement for our students on IEPs versus our students who are not receiving special education services. And wanted to see what we can do to help close those gaps some more. So we got, we're approved for funding to have a third-party evaluation come in. They're reviewing data and doing classroom observations and getting input from people within our stakeholder groups. Um, so the group that we had, uh, that, the recommendation that team that we selected was the technical assistance for excellence in special education. Um, they are housed out of the university or Utah State University. Um, they had a group that came last month to visit us. But before that, we started with surveys and as was mentioned earlier, people a lot of times get surveyed out. Um, there's so much information coming up. So this is just one piece of the puzzle. Um, and hopefully what their goal was, was to get some background data so that when they were able to come forward and have those in-person conversations, they weren't starting from scratch. So, and they still have, um, people who are responding to the survey. So they're still collecting some data from that, um, both parents and staff. Then last month they came for a district visit. They had a chance to do school observations and they discussed things with staff. Um, both the, the special education team and the administrators were the focus of their first visit back in January. Um, we attempted to have some parent focus groups. Unfortunately, um, we didn't have as much lead time on those as I would have liked. And so the turnout for those was not quite as much as I was hoping for. So we are going to redo that, do those again. So the next steps, um, since yesterday, this has changed. We now know for a fact they'll be here March third through fifth for their second visit. Um, during that visit, one of the things they will do is also look at our files. Um, review some of our paperwork and our processes. And more than looking at individual student records, it's more the idea of what are our processes for completing that paperwork? And how are we making sure that we are staying legally compliant? Um, they also are going to work on talking with general education teachers because they did not have time for that in their first round. Like I said, we are going to put together some more parent focus groups, um, starting now and also doing some more individual outreach. I know especially with our um, Latinx families, having a personal invitation, um, will be very valuable for them. Um, that was one of the suggestions I got from one of my interpreters that was slated to help us with those nights. She said, you know, if you want me to call these parents ahead of time, I'd love to do it. And I think you'd get a lot more people here. So we'll be putting in some different work to ensure that they are joining us, um, that we're having all families represented. We're also going to do some student focus groups, um, at the middle school and the high school, speaking with students, um, trying to get a cross-section of students and finding out how they feel about their services and how they feel just, you know, their life has been different because they were served by special education. And after pulling all of that together, they are anticipating that their report will be completed by the end of March in order to present to the school board, I would guess probably then in April. Um, in order for us to then make some decisions about how to move forward. I'm hoping that from this report, there'll be some recommendations that allow us to make some decisions about what really we need to be doing as a department. Um, I'm also hoping that we get those done. Get those early enough that I may be able to, it may come down to some recommendations. Also going back to the intensive program, um, I know this week when I spoke with my contact, he said um, training will be a definite component of that. And so he'll have some ideas for us for training. So it may be something that we need a little bit of funding to help cover um, those additional days of training that my staff would need coming into the next school year. Um, or also looking at long-term, is it something that we need to have as ongoing training? And who do we partner with for those sorts of changes as we are trying to make those? Any questions?
Um, is, is our student population for sped still about seventeen percent or has that moved in either direction? Or we're still holding?
It's still, it's still holding at about the same as where we were. It, um, the, when we created this recommendation, one of the reasons that we changed it, there that we created the recommendation was because our demographic, while the number hasn't changed, the intensity and the needs have definitely changed. Um, our students, we now have a significant higher number of students with autism or developmental delays and they're students who are more impacted by disability um, to a more significant level. And unfortunately the training to work with students that have those, those greater impacts is something that is very targeted at someone who is going into special education and not necessarily as addressed in a general education training courses. So we have a lot of students who are coming in with higher levels of need. And we have a lot of general education teachers who have not received the training to provide for those students. And then if we have special education teachers who are also very new to their jobs, um, which is one of the big challenges that we are running into, it's kind of making a perfect storm of challenge right now that we are hoping for suggestion, some suggestions to be able to overcome. Because it's a, we do not see, do not see the numbers decreasing anytime soon. Um, or the intensity decreasing anytime soon. Um, the other thing for us as a district is you tend to have pockets of kids and different age groups where our, um, you know, for a while, our middle school had a significant number of special education students. And so we had to adjust our funding. Well, right now our middle school has much less much lower numbers of special education students where our high school and our elementaries are higher and then our elementary higher need students is also growing. So we have to be looking not only right now, what does this look like, but as these students age up, how do we need to adjust our programming? Because what we have provided now at the middle school won't be enough in three or four years. And then we're going to have a time where there's a gap in the high school, won't need as much. So really trying to help us do some longitudinal planning. Um, is what we are hoping for out of this recommendation.
And I'm assuming the one way we could help is for the legislation that currently is going to bump up funding from eleven up to potentially fifteen percent. It's something that our advocacy would help. I mean, granted, we'd be above that, but I mean, that would help to bridge that gap from six percentage points as it currently stands to only two.
Correct. That would definitely help. The other thing, and I don't know if there's anything proposed in the legislature right now, um, one of the things that happens is that every student in special education, if you, um, once you are, are made eligible, you get the additional funding. Well, that same additional funding comes whether you have a lisp or whether you are multi-handicapped in a wheelchair, blind with, that needs full Braille interpretation. So those two different students, while the funding we receive for them is the same, it would, right now I have some students that I spend a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year to educate, if not more than that. So the reality is the eight thousand dollars or, you know, that we would get additional funding, that does not come near to what it is that we have to provide for some of these students. Um, so we use an outside agency called Columbia Regional Inclusive Services to provide a lot of those services, but like they too are then facing these funding cuts. So as we are struggling to make, how are we going to meet the needs of some of these higher need students? The people that we reach out to to also help us with these higher need students are not getting the funding either. So while the general cap is a challenge, it's also the fact that every student is just a one or a zero. Um, there's no intensity difference when the needs of a student increases significantly.
Yeah. And also, so there's, there's a couple of things they're looking at through this legislature. So one is increasing the cap and/or going to no cap. And then, um, one is the high cost disability, because they've not revisited that they've not discussed in many, many years. And um, I think since it was established in the early nineties and right now districts get in return for high cost disability costs, we get forty cents on the dollar in return. Um, so that's another area they're looking at. And then another area is, um, special education, early intervention services, um, for our kids zero to five. Um, who um, have special needs and/or a disability and increasing the funding and funneling services to those um, students. So they're better prepared when they do get to um, school.
Makes sense.
Yeah. And we're all doing, I mean, yes, um, school boards can definitely help advocate in that area and we would love that if we we had all of our school boards definitely pushing um, for that advocacy, superintendent's, our COSA is, we're all advocating for for that, um, in addition to a lot of other things we're advocating for.
Any other questions? Okay. Looks like it is you, Director Bowen.
I'm, I'm kind of regretting how I formatted this slide because I, I feel a bit like a broken record. Um, because this community engagement audit was also um, a, a funding recommendation that came out of the intensive program. Um, one thing that I did want to note about this recommendation in particular was this was actually the first initiative that was brought uh, through the intensive program and that was approved, that was brought forth by someone who was outside of uh, North Wasco County School District. Um, and some of the why this assessment was needed, um, both our strategic plan and our integrated guidance application emphasize deepening and strengthening our community engagement as a district priority. But in the past, uh, we've had limited bandwidth and limited resources to dedicate to moving this work forward. And research and experience confirm that strong engagement is essential for student belongings and success. We also know that our district employees are already kind of at capacity and have a lot on their plate with existing responsibilities. So we wanted to be thoughtful and intentional with the initiatives we put forward. With existing responsibilities. So we wanted to be thoughtful and intentional with the initiatives we put forward, um, for our time and effort. Was also an opportunity to bring in some external perspective and bring in fresh, fresh insights and innovative approaches. As well as identify and replicate things that were going really well in our district. Um, the assessment itself was broke into four key areas. Welcoming practices, i.e. how effectively are we partnering with families in student learning? Our communication systems, are the current practices two-way ineffective? Information systems, how well do our systems connect our families to learning? And last but not least, parent empowerment. Um, how are we creating the opportunities for collaboration and leadership? So a little bit about the assessment process, um, this summer we contracted with PCG. This is the same group that helped facilitate our strategic planning process. I was also able to form, um, a kind of inner district, uh, group of community engagement folks. From each of our school sites to help us navigate through the process and ensure there is representation. Um, and input from each of the school sites as we work through this process. Um, and then PCG helped us facilitate some surveys, some site walkthroughs. They actually went to a couple of events. At a couple of the different school sites while they were onsite. Um, analysis of our current communication tools, so Parents Square, our website, et cetera. Um, some one-on-one stakeholder conversations and fifteen separate focus groups. Um, and these were conducted across all of our schools in the district. Um, from that, moving forward, uh, the results were broke into five kind of reoccurring themes. That, um, we were able to put into buckets to, um, identify where our strengths and challenges were. Um, to make a comprehensive plan of kind of like how we go from here. Um, the plan itself, I would love to share the whole document with you. I just want to go over kind of like a few highlights tonight. Um, the QR code in the first slide, um, can take you to the whole document or I'm happy to link that later if you guys would like to read it. Cause it is, um, some great information. So the first area of focus is, uh, school climate and culture. Some of the strengths that they found were, um, welcoming staff and leadership presence. So some of the things that they noticed were like principals greeting folks during drop-off or pickup during the day. Um, and then strong teacher-student relationships were also noted in surveys. Some of the challenges noticed, um, were language assess- accessibility gaps, um. Not super surprising there. Um, we do have one bilingual liaison at the middle school. But we, um, have some of the gaps at some of our other school sites. Um, this also kind of, um, bleeds into our facilities. One of the things identified was, um. The need for multilingual signage, um, and communication across all of our school sites. Um, we weren't really cohesive in the way that this was presented at all of our schools. Uh, other, other recommendations include improving inclusivity and cultural representation. And I think we've, um, really started to make some waves here, but, um, continuing to move this work forward is important. Um, and was noted in the information that, or the feedback that we received. Um, and then last but not least, increasing activities that promote and strengthen community relationships both inside and outside of our schools. Notable survey, sorry, go back one more. So I'm still talking. Uh, ninety percent of our staff believe families are welcome. Um, and forty-six percent of our community members feel welcome, welcome. So there is a little bit of a discrepancy between, um, our families. Um, feelings and perceptions of our school district and the community at large. The largest gap seen, um, was between student diversity being recognized and discussed. All right, now the next slide. Communication and engagement was the next bucket. Um, some of the successes was the implementation of Parent Square, which has been really widely well-received. Um, as Dr. Burnall noted earlier, we have really good, um, contact rates in Parent Square, um, kind of higher than their average. Um, we have, um, so anyone in our school information system is automatically connected with a Parent Square account. Who has custody marked in our student information system. Um, and this is how parents, uh, keep in contact with our schools, our district, anything from like basic classroom level announcements. To like snow days like today. Um, some of the other successes were monthly newsletters. However, um, that also kind of led to one of the challenges. Which families felt, um, that they were often overloaded with communication. Um, and that they received message fatigue. So some of their recommendations, um. Were developing consistent practices about how we send those updates and progress reports. So so that we're not creating that fatigue and being more mindful of like which messages and which modalities are being sent out. Kind of streamlining our process. Um, and then as far as engagement, encouraging staff and district leaders to actively participate in a community events. Okay, next slide. Student and staff relationships, um, notably, our families felt that our teachers had a high level of respect for our students. Other successes, as we talked about, um, tonight was our youth outreach workers were mentioned. Um, and then our family liaison for Spanish speaking families at the middle school. Um, challenges, again, community trust issues with the district and a disconnect between the community and the school district. Um, ninety percent of staff believe that they can build trust with family, families. Eighty-one percent of staff believe students are treated with respect. And only fifty-five percent of families feel students diversity is recognized. So those are some of the notable survey findings. Um, recommendations moving forward required proactive, positive outreach from the staff. Um, and we're definitely working on that as well as some more com- community engagement activities. Um, and some of the work that we've already talked about tonight is definitely feeding into some of those initiatives. Okay, next slide. Okay, I'm going to butcher this word. I apologize, pedagogical effectiveness. Findings included teaching strategies, um, varying diff- between schools. Um, also, families of color felt underrepresented in, in curriculum content. And I know that's something that Director Brennan is aware of and has been working for, um, toward. Um, and also something that, um, some of the initiatives in our district have already made progress on. For example, um, the tribal history, shared history work that we've been undergoing this last year. Um, recommendations included increasing this culturally relevant material and instructional practices. And aligning curriculum across the schools, um, for consistent learning experiences. Next slide. School environments, um, this shouldn't be a shock to any of you guys. Some of the concerns were safety hazards and outdated infrastructures at our high school. Um, and inconsistent of enforcement of security policies across schools. Um, so what this means is, um, during the site visits, PCG, um, was kind of met with different ways. Like check-in processes. There were some schools with gates, some that had you check in through the office, different procedures. So really streamlining, um, those, uh, entrance protocols and security measures was one of the recommendations. Um, and then, uh, one of the other recommendations was just how we, um, communicate. When there are threats or safety issues at our schools. So we're going to be working on reviewing and rising and improving. Um, those processes as well. Uh, last but not least, school-sponsored activities, um, we have parents volunteering actively in the classrooms. I will note, we would always love to have more volunteers in our classrooms. Um, and all schools host at least one family engagement event annually. Um, one thing I would like to work on, on a personal level is having some collaborative district-wide elementary, um, engagement activities. So doing more things as a district than just one-off at schools. Um, challenges include obviously limited funding for engagement ad- activities and scheduling conflicts. Um, reducing family participation, especially when families have kids in multiple school sites. Um, notable survey findings included forty-seven percent of staff believing that students are satisfied, satisfied with activities. In contrast with seventy-three percent of our families. So more families actually felt that students were sat- satisfied than our staff. And, um, ninety-two percent of community members want more school business partnerships. So even though there, um, is a bit of a divide there in the community, um. The intent and the hope to be collaborative is there, um, and I think we have definitely started that work through the Yale. Youth Wellness Committee, um, and several other initiatives. Um, but I look forward to growing that this coming couple of years. Um, recommendations including seeking community-sponsored part- partnerships, hosting more in community spaces. Or bringing our community into our spaces such as business, CBOs, faith-based institutions. Um, and then like how we bring in volunteer opportunities for folks who are not necessarily, um, family members into our school. Um, last but not least, oop, sorry, last but not least is organizing smaller events such as parent-teacher meetings or workshops to encourage family involvement. Um, so moving forward, I've already had an opportunity to, uh, meet with several different groups to review the data. And the recommendations that were put forward through this assessment. Um, I'm working on putting this into kind of a project management, um, tracker to be able to start some of these initiatives. And we've kind of identified, um, one or two priorities in each of these key areas. That we have either already started work on or that we want to prioritize for this next year. With that, I will turn it back over to you guys to see if there's any questions.
Well, under, uh, the pedagogical effectiveness, uh, the, the recommendation that that last bullet point. Doesn't quite make sense to me because they're asking to align curriculum, but. Don't we have the same curriculum with the exception being DLI? So I don't fully understand, I guess, what that is getting at outside of the first bullet under findings. Is it teaching strategies vary, but is that one, I don't reconcile that one in my head, so.
Yeah, so, um, I think it's not necessarily the curriculum itself, um, and I understand the misconception there. But it's like the, the misalignment of how it's being maybe experienced or taught at each of the schools. Um, so maybe some of the schools are teaching things to more fidelity or maybe things are a bit lacking in other places. So making sure that like we are all like effectively, um. Using our curriculum in the way it's intended to, that we're aligned across our schools. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so I was trying to, because I didn't know if we're trying to get at, you know, di- different test scores and outcome even with.
Yeah, and I can give you.
Curriculum being taught, maybe read the full report, Mike.
Yeah, definitely. And that's what I was just about to say.
Doesn't make sense, okay.
Read the full report, it'll give you a little bit more insight. I just wanted to do kind of the high level. I will say one of some of the background that went into that. Was that there were, um, there was some feedback that. Families and our staff felt that there was still this kind of breakdown between the elementaries in particular. Of the haves and the have-nots, and that this was especially, um. Visible when students transitioned into middle school that, um, they felt that some students from some. Some elementary schools were better prepared than others.
Okay. Now, thank you for that. Uh, no, I'll, I'll read through the report. Cool. Thank you.
Hey, intervention progress teams, uh.
Get us started and as long as, uh. Amy and Shannon promised to jump in with their expertise once in a while and make sure I don't leave out anything important. Um, so intervention progress teams are the IPT work. This is, uh, a pretty large project. So, um. In, in general, what an intervention progress team is a collaborative, general education solution generating team. Made up of a variety of school perspectives. And the purpose is to support teachers in reflecting on, enhancing their tier-one practices. And then to implement targeted tier-two and three behavioral and tier-three academic interventions when needed. So you, using equity land as the team consider the whole student when making decisions. Um, that affect their long-term educational experience and sense of belonging. The way I would sort of describe an IPT team is sort of your, it's a designated team of people from a, um, a broad. Uh, cross-section of disciplines. Who, um, can come together, like a teacher can make a referral to the team and then they can. Look at like what's going on with this student. And it's whatever, whatever they're struggling with, whether it's academics. You know, whether it's behavior, um, it's, you know, the, the tier-one. Process of being in that classroom isn't quite enough. So we're going to go to our first line of help and that's our IPT teams to start looking at things and, and help that teacher with their practice. And, um, and look for ways to bring that student along. Um, and, uh, what's on the next one? Yeah, so on, so I did, here's a sample menu. Um, so when we're talking about intervention, there's actually quite a bit to it. Um, and, um, and, and so I wanted to show this little sample of, of like, here's. This would be like a menu of, of choices that could be provided. It's not exhaustive, but for an intervention progress team to be able to refer to. So we're working on a handbook and it'll have, uh, all those, the steps of what to do and how to. Uh, run your IPT and then it'll also have some things like this where, uh, it can provide them, uh, examples of interventions to use.
I'll go ahead and take it from there, CJ.
Okay.
Um, so one of the things, kind of some changes we're making through this, the first thing is our terminology. In a district our size, um, it's kind of ridiculous that up until just a couple of years ago and even going into this year. These teams had different names and different buildings. One building called it the student assessment team. So one called it student assistance team. One called it the student study team. They all had different names and they weren't necessarily always using. The exact same paperwork. One school may have addressed it a little bit differently. So I think this kind of speaks to what, there was that question. That you just had Jose on that pedagogical page. I think this is part of the place where some of those discrepancies were happening. You know, in one building, a student who's not meeting the same standards might have been referred to the student assistance team. And gone through some tier-one interventions within, still within the classroom. Well, then in another school, that would mean, oh, you get to go to title-one services. And you get all of those outside of the classroom without us changing a lot in the room. And I think this is one of those places where there has been some discrepancy. So we're looking to try to align this. So that regardless of what school you attend. The chances of you getting referred for special education, the chances of you going into title-one services, the, what it takes to. Like go to that next level, all are consistent across the district rather than being very school-dependent. Um, so what we've been doing is every month during our monthly principal leadership, or I guess leadership team meeting on Thursdays. Um, we've reserved the last hour for the IP teams, like IPT teams to come together. Um, and so they, we are asking for anyone who stands on that team normally. So the, um, normally there's somebody from special education, someone from the title-one staff, um, the school counselor. We're asking all of those teams to come together and we're having conversations both. Along the details of how we do this, but also some higher level thinking of getting to the why of this whole process. So we're trying to address both the like nuts and bolts and day-to-day, how does this team really need to work? But also making sure that everyone understands philosophically where we are coming from as a district in order to make these changes. To address the students' needs consistently. Uh, we are working, putting on new forms that we need to. We chose the form, we just need to finish the details on the form, um, so it's really focused on student needs and on interventions. Because as a district, there've been a, there's been a lot of focus on the need. But the, those solutions or those interventions and who's going to put those in place has been something that we know that we could build some stronger supports around. Um, and a huge shout out to the Hermiston School District, um, they had an amazing form that I had an opportunity to see. And they were more than happy to share it with us and said, oh yeah, don't reinvent the wheel. We have something that's working and are, they shared it with us. And we're just going to make some minor tweaks to make it align better with us. We are also really increasing the data collection expectations. Um, a lot of times when a student is referred to special education and we ask for data. We'll have a lot of anecdotal information, um, saying that like, here's what this behavior looks like. But we don't necessarily have a good reading on the intensity or the duration or really how many times is it happening? Like a student, yes, he screams, okay, well, is he screaming for one minute? Is he screaming for seven minutes? Is he screaming to the point that you can hear him through a closed door? So trying to really hone in on what do these needs look like? And then also that allows us to really have some better intervention data of what have we tried? Because yeah, maybe the student's still screaming three times an hour, but they're now screaming for fifteen seconds. We're to begin with those three minutes each time. So just saying he screams three times doesn't share the same level of information. The other big thing is interventions are for everyone and they can be implemented by anyone. So these are the things that we do, you know, it's second nature a lot of times that you realize this student. Really has a hard time keeping his hands to himself. Um, currently, the whole time we've been meeting, I've had a hair clip in my hand that I'm flipping back and forth. Cause I'm a fidgeter. So have you handed a kid a fidget to see if that maybe keeps his hands off of his partner? Okay, we're to give him a fidget. That, believe it or not, is all it takes to say it's an intervention. Just trying something new. Did you move the student around the classroom into different places to see if they're more successful? If it is something that you really need to know about, then you're going to track that data. But chances are there's teachers who are doing a lot of these things without even knowing it. And so we are making sure that they understand that concept of what an intervention is. And how we make sure that they are meeting the needs of all students through that tier-one instruction. Because tier-one and the classroom instruction is the strongest piece. And if we do not have that first interven- that first layer of instruction as strong as it needs to be.
And if we do not have that first intervent, that first layer of instruction as strong as it needs to be, our other layers can't build upon it. So that's really where our focus has been, like CJ said in the first slide, on focusing on what does tier-one instruction look like? How do we make slight changes within that classroom setting to meet students' needs? And then determine when we really need to be looking outside. And this is also hopefully going to then lead us to maybe a little bit of a reduction in those special education numbers. Because if we are able to do the proper interventions and we're able to really collect some data and say, hey, yeah, this student maybe still behind. But look how much they've grown, so rather than focusing on the deficit, we're able to focus more on that progress.
Yeah, if I could just, you know, piggyback on that a little bit, uh, I'm glad you went back to that. Cause like, uh, the tier-one focus is if you think of it as in terms of filters in a system. Like your tier-one is extremely important because you wanna make sure that it's catching all the kids it can. So that the kids that are going to tier-two and going to tier-three need, they're really the tier-two and tier-three kids. We don't have too many kids going into our upper, upper tiers. So that's why the focus so far this year has really been on the tier-one piece.
Amy, I think that, that focus is awesome to make sure that kids that truly need these extra interventions are getting them. And we're not inappropriately lumping too many kids in those categories. Within that, though, um, this, this idea of, of everything. Or, you know, anything can be an intervention, but it just needs to be sort of categorized correctly and, and recorded. Like in a, in a classroom of twenty-five to twenty-eight kids, are you looking at a way for this to not be too cumbersome upon the classroom teacher? Who has, you know, a full day full of kids, but I also need to make sure I'm taking the time to kind of record these things?
Definitely, so, um, for example, for behavior, we will a lot of times get a long paragraph from somebody saying, here's what this looks like. Okay, I don't need to know a paragraph, but if we're trying to figure out, you know, why is Johnny out of his seat? Literally, you get a piece of paper and you break it into time periods and a teacher just has to tally every time Johnny's out of his seat. And we're able to look and realize, wow, you know, the predominance of out-of-his-seat time is during math. Hmm, what's happening during math to keep him out of his seat? Then we can start an intervention there, and so that's how we're doing that data collection. And then we figure out, so math is a challenge, what is the challenge during math? So maybe it's that he has a skill deficit. Chances are, he's not the only one in his classroom with that skill deficit. Or if he is, with our new math curriculum we have, we have some lessons that they can do online that are targeted at their specific skill deficits. If it's not, if he's not the only kid, then you could pull a small group to work on that skill deficit while some other kids are online. And maybe some other kids are doing an enrichment activity, so this is something that you really can work into the curriculum. And like I said, a lot of times it's something as simple as moving them around the classroom. Do they need a printing bigger? Do they need printing smaller? Do they need it? Is it somebody who needs to move a lot? So you take their worksheet and you give them three problems at a time. And after every three problems, they get to walk up to the front. So we start with those low-level interventions and really just making little tweaks to things. And yes, in a classroom, it can be challenging, but there are also things that we can put in place. That actually will help everyone be more successful, so that you actually then buy yourself more time to individualize lessons. So when you have that tier-one instruction really strong, you are gonna have students who are really successful. And then you can start to differentiate and really, it does make it easier. Like, I mean, it, it takes a lot of structure and getting it there, but once you have the right structures in place, you're able to target a lot of these things more successfully.
Awesome, thanks.
Yeah.
Well, and I would just add, I would, sorry, uh, I was just gonna add that I, um, I mean, we are always striving to streamline. And be as efficient as possible in terms of like how we collect data. Um, but the, the bottom line is the teacher is the best person to collect that data. Because they have the daily interaction all day with that child. Um, and yeah, we, we realize that that might sometimes be challenging. Given that they've got a lot of different needs happening in their classroom all at once. Um, but they really are the frontline and they are the best person to collect that data. Um, but on our end, we also are asking like, does, does this way of collecting data work? Like, is this efficient enough? Like, is this easy enough for you to do? Like, we're collecting that feedback back from our teachers too, because obviously if they're saying this is, like, this is too much, right? I can't do this or whatnot, then how do we change and evolve and make it so it's easier for the teacher to collect the data? Sorry, go ahead, Shannon.
I was just going to add in that, somebody said it earlier, um, about, uh, you know, you can't intervene your way out of a tier-one problem. And when we're looking at our data and we see that a lot of our students are below grade level and not performing. And meeting grade level expectations on a variety of assessments, not just OSAS. You know, we, we do have to rethink how we are delivering that tier-one instruction. So that more students are achieving, um, at grade level and, and at their full potential. And at the elementary schools, we have, um, implemented, uh, a, a, oh, a, a period of time during the day. Specific for interventions, um, called WIN, what I need. And, and, um, and classroom teachers are also delivering interventions during that time. And so we're shifting the, even just, even just the mindset of, oh, interventions have to be outside of the classroom. Specific to say an ELD intervention or a Title I reading intervention. Or even like a tier-three with, with a special education in the resource room intervention. But, but what we are, um, shifting, and it started, uh, last summer with, with building principles. Was that interventions happen all day, every day. And we can have this dedicated time during the school day where classroom teachers are also delivering very intentional interventions. And, and all students are receiving that, um, and whether that is in specific to reading or math. Or, um, behavior, um, it, it is happening. And, and we're, and the, um, uh, Principal Kilgore has, has initiated that conversation with my department. To, to expand that up to the middle school as well. Because they're also noticing that when, when kids are coming in with a deficit, we can't just teach them, uh, grade-level content. It's not going to fill in those, those holes in their learning. And so, um, this, this idea and, and mindset that everybody, all, all staff, all teachers. Can, um, provide interventions to students is, is growing. And, and I think that that is, that is in time going to be very impactful to what our students are able to achieve.
Any other questions related to the work we're doing around intervention progress teams? All right. Hang in there, this is our last, our last little bucket. All right, Bambi.
Okay, welcome, um, thanks, first of all, thanks for being here and being interested in just, you know, all the wonderful things going on in the district. I just really appreciate that. Um, I wanted to bring you kind of an update to our Equity Committee. Um, first of all, as you probably know, there's ORS. And the Senate Bill seven thirty-two has actually given us, um, you know, the mandate that the Oregon school districts are required to have. An Equity Team and no later than September of twenty-twenty-five. We've been working on this for the last, you know, three years actually, and, and kind of getting it up and running. And, um, so we do have our committee members that are made up of a community member, a parent, um, school board member. Teachers, ESPs, an OT specialist, and a climate and culture TOSA, as well as an administrator and myself. So where we've gained more, um, uh, committee members in the last couple of months. Um, just going out and recruiting, we are still missing a student, so we'd love to have a student on our team. And we're, um, actively seeking, um, that in the future, so. A few things that we've, I've done, you know, our, our goals for our committee, um, in the last couple of years. And specifically this year is just to improve outcomes and experiences for our marginalized students. Um, that's creating access and opportunities that benefit each of our students, analyzing the data. And this is where it's, it's kind of neat, you've already heard about the student perception data. Our climate and culture TOSA is bringing the elementary student perception data to us. We're looking at the data with the wellness, um, collaboration and partnering with them, Youth Think Survey. Um, and also the data suite, taking a look at data and also, um, the, the student. Um, you know, their perception of the, the act of belonging and do they feel a part of our schools? Uh, to really help improve their outcomes and their experiences. We wanna celebrate the cultures that we have in our district and we're looking internally specifically. We're looking internally at how we relate with our students. I know one of the questions of the student perception data is, do you have one adult that you can go to at school? That you're comfortable going to and that you are connecting with? And so making sure that, you know, we're, you know, what we can do as an Equity Committee to help, um, with that, with our, our students. Um, this year, we're also reviewing district policies and practices through an Equity Lens. Those that are coming up on the school board meetings and, um, you know, we're using the Oregon Equity Lens. And identifying just potential institutional barriers and providing feedback to the school board as they come, as these, uh, policies come up. Um, in your first reading, second readings. Um, so currently, we are reviewing policy GBNA AR, the hazing, harassment, intimidation, bullying, menacing and cyber. Um, bullying, just that, um, and they provided some feedback, just actually on some, um, on Monday. We had started looking at that. It's not, um, one that is coming up, but they wanted to start with that, knowing that, um, the bullying, the perception and the sense of belonging. Um, this policy, uh, potentially could be used, um, quite a bit to, um, just help support our students. In, um, you know, knowing that if something is going awry or, you know, that there's board policy. That, that really supports, um, them with making a report and how we handle it as adults. Um, could help them feel a sense of, um, belonging at our schools that, you know, we too are gonna be taking care of those. So that's our Equity Committee goals that we have. Um, and our new, newer members, uh, are getting kind of up to speed. And, um, that's where we are. Any questions?
Related to this, I think there's also a requirement to make sure that someone from the committee is on the Budget Committee. And is that who we, um, put on the last, okay, so we're meeting that as well in addition to having the committee, okay?
Yep, absolutely.
Yeah.
Okay. So that's all the information we had to share with you tonight. We know it was like a lot of information to digest and to take in. But we felt it was really important to just share all of the work that we do have going on. And, um, I think you've heard me say this, um, many times, but this is, this is a lot of systems work and alignment work. And, um, getting compliance work that happens every day in the district. And we're all part of that work and engaged in it. Um, so, uh, we wanted to, to highlight that work that's happening and to celebrate it. Because it is a lot of good work that's happening, um, to improve outcomes for our kids, um, both academically and socially emotionally. So we really appreciate your time and hanging in there with us tonight. And if there's no further questions, I will give it back to Director Jones.
Well, thank you, everyone, that was a lot of information, but good information, and we do have that QR code, correct? For the full report?
Yes, yeah, and I can, um, send it all to you guys in a link as well.
Thank you, that'd be good. All right, anyone else got anything they wanna say?
Just, I'll add.
Just wanna say, oh, go ahead.
Thank you to the board members, um, this is, you know, I appreciate all of the work that went into the presentations. And thank you to everyone who presented to educate us, this was, um, one of our three, uh, board goals, so good job, everybody. Um, we've learned more about the district and, you know, it's, it's really our north star to understand our students. And so thank you for teaching us.
And, and similarly, I just wanted to echo, uh, what Dr. Richardson said about just thank you. I know this is a lot of work, I know this entails a lot of meetings, uh, to get to this and discussion and putting things together. So thank you, um, I, I know that while it may not be the most glamorous of things, I know that at the end of the day, it is. Uh, to the benefit of our kiddos, and so for that, I, I can't thank you guys enough, so thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Great, anyone else got anything? If not, then I will adjourn this meeting. Have a good evening, everyone.